...the United States of America and to their public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone. Tom, you're going to take the roll call, please.
Mayor King.
President.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Obala.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
Posma.
Present.
Shusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number one is a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? carries. Number two, approving the minutes from May 3, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have number three is recognition, under recognition awards. We have Nancy Schnabel here from Discover Austin to give us a nice presentation, annual report. Nancy.
Thanks so much, Mayor, Council. It's always a pleasure to present to you in person this year. So, forget about that. So I think you have all of the paperwork in front of you with our 2020 annual report. I will run through that and just do some of the highlights over the last year and kind of give you a sneak peek as to what we're working for in the future. So you will see in 2019, we were doing fantastic. We had hosted the governor's pheasant hunting opener. We had more on the books going into 2020 than we had in the past 10 years as far as events and conferences. And then, like so many industries, ours came to a screeching halt in about March when, you know, the closure of schools and breweries and gyms and theaters and all of that happened in the middle of March. And then by the end of March, there was a stay-at-home order in place, and that got extended into April. And so that just kind of set the tone for the rest of our 2020 year. But we are very optimistic people, and despite all of the hurdles, Austin continued to prove that there's so much support in our community, and we continue to promote the areas of awesomeness that Austin has. We had to pivot a little bit, but some of the examples of how we did that is typically we promote Austin outside of Austin, far and wide, and bring all those visitors into town. So we had to kind of change that a little bit and narrow what we considered our visitors. And we promoted a restaurant bingo. So we put all the restaurants on this bingo card and kind of sent it out to the local residents in surrounding areas and said, come visit all of the local restaurants. You know, everybody kind of has their favorite two, three, four. Well, don't forget about the other ones. And so it was kind of a visual to let people know all that we had to offer. We did a Be a Tourist in Your Own Hometown. Typically, we do a bunch of different campaigns for that every year. But this year, we did one that just said Neighborhood Quest for Be a Tourist in Your Own Hometown. And there's still many exciting things that you can do and explore and adventure here in your own community. Cobblestone Hotels and Suites was already groundbreaking and in the process of building, so even during a pandemic, they opened up. And so we are excited to have them in our inventory right now. Most of you are familiar with the historic Paramount Theater. It is a wonderful attraction, and in 2020, they actually added a little mini museum in the lobby there. So if you haven't seen that, I highly recommend checking it out. And we knew that during the pandemic, the essentials were still needed, and those supplies were coming on truck and trailer. And so we wrapped a 53-foot semi-trailer with all sorts of awesome Austin pictures. And the nice thing with that marketing campaign, it will actually continue to travel throughout the United States for the next 10 years. And so far, we get a report every month as to where it has been, and it has been to over 20 different states. And so it is definitely putting some miles on and promoting Austin, and so we are super excited about that. And then, one of our cornerstones after 10 years, Eileen Chow did retire. And so that was kind of a sneak peek as to what happened or a snapshot as to what happened in 2020. Like I said, we had to pivot a little bit. And so we, instead of promoting to conferences and conventions and events, we started working with travel bloggers. They could come with a household, they could, you know, follow all the COVID rules. And so we welcomed the Travel Mom Blog. She's a writer that came to town, and you can see some of the highlights that she had said, if you have kids and you're looking for things to do in Austin, the SPAM Museum is a must. And then we welcomed Sherbra. Actually, we are continuing to welcome them because they have seven different travel writers, and two of them have been here. One of them came in 2020 and said, this mini brewery and food tour is the perfect sampling of local bites and brews. And so they will continue to be doing travel or sending travel writers throughout 2021 as well. She Saves She Travels is actually a nationwide travel writer, and she highlighted our Mexican food, award-winning barbecue sauces, French onion soup, and stuffed French toast. And so if you've ever had the French onion soup at the Old Mill, you know exactly what I'm talking about. So. Another one that we vetted was the Twin Cities Frugal Mom. She actually brought her entire family down to Austin. They spent two nights and three days here. And I love the summary that she did, which said, okay, Minnesota families, if you are looking for a mini getaway for MEA weekend or for any other weekend or any time of the year, I have a great suggestion for you, Austin, Minnesota. And so I think that summarized it pretty well. But my absolute favorite writer that came to town was actually a freelance writer for the Mankato Free Press. And you'll see on page six and seven, the two-page article that she wrote for the Mankato Free Press that actually ended up in the Mankato magazine as well, which is kind of like our Austin Living magazine. And so you can see all the things that she highlighted there. I won't read it because it's two pages, but when you've got some free time, check out page six and seven there. She highlighted Austin very well with a nice summary. On page eight, you'll kind of see some of our statistics. We print about 25,000 visitor guides every year. We didn't quite go through all of them in 2020, and so we reused them. We've got this bright yellow sticker that we put over the calendar events that says, Austin is awesome, but these events might not be the same dates in 2021, so check out our calendar for more information. And so they can go to our website and see if they're updated or if they had to postpone again. We updated our website in 2020. A lot of people were online, and so that got updated. And then our social media, our Instagram, people were posting pictures. The weather was beautiful, they were doing things outdoors, and so our Instagram actually increased by 35% year over year. We usually have about 200 tour and travel buses that come into town. As you could imagine, we didn't quite have that many in 2020, but we did have nine. And those nine came before March 15. And so we had just shy of 350 travelers, and they came from Minnesota, Iowa, and Ohio. We are primarily funded with lodging tax and with a stay-at-home order. It wasn't as much as there normally was either, and you'll see that we did have a 43% decline year over year. So that makes it a little tough, but like I said, we're optimistic, and we'll get through this as well. Going into the state annual report, you'll kind of see there that that kind of mirrors Austin only on a little bit bigger scale. Going into 2020, they were doing well, just like we were in 2019. They typically have about 76 million visitors that visit the state annually. And going in 2019, the leisure hospitality gross sales were increased by 3.5%. Visitation grew to 2.6 on average. But then same thing happened in 2020, that the travel spending in Minnesota decreased by $7.1 billion. And so Austin wasn't the only one that felt the effect of the COVID. But good news, leisure travel is likely to lead the recovery. Unfortunately, it probably won't be from international travel, as that has shown an 80% decrease year over year. And they'll say that that might return to pre-pandemic levels forecasted for 2024 or later. But they do think that domestic leisure travel will be back to pre-pandemic levels in 2022-ish. However, the business travel is forecasted to take twice as long. So those events and those conferences, they'll come back, it just might take them a little bit longer. And then on page 13, you'll see some familiar faces on there. And our city council representative in 2020 was Mr. Steve King, and now he has become the mayor. And so we are excited to welcome Mike Posma on our board, so.
Nice upgrade.
And so you'll see that kind of that Board of Directors there. Going into 2021, we do have some exciting plans. You'll see that we have a hot-off-the-press bike map. That does include not only the City of Austin trails, it also includes the Shooting Star Trail in Mauer County, and it also includes the Schindler Way Mountain Bike Trail. Exciting. We will be hosting the state mountain bike race again this year at the end of August. And we will be welcoming the Bike MS Ride Across Minnesota at the end of July. So we really truly are still becoming a biking destination. You will also see that big, thick magazine that is the Southern Minnesota Tourism Association magazine, and all those little tabs in there is all the times that Austin was highlighted in their 2021 guide. So pretty excited that we got highlighted so much. That magazine does cover 36 different counties in southern Minnesota, so I think we got our fair share of coverage as far as that goes. We do have a couple of events called Tourism Talks, where we invite the community to come and sit down, give us some ideas on ultimately what they think we should be promoting to Austin, to visitors, and if they want to partner with us in any way. That's, we've had one, and we'll have another one here on June 17. And then mark your calendars. For next Friday, May 28, at 8:15 in the morning at Carnew, we will be revealing our 2021 marketing campaign. So I'll leave you with a little cliffhanger there, and you can see us next Friday to learn more about that, so.
Promise donuts.
Yeah, bring food. 8:30 on Friday, 28.
8:15 on Friday morning at Carnew.
Yeah.
And yes, Craig, I'll try to have donuts, and I've also requested donuts with sprinkles, so if anybody has special orders, let me know.
Taggart wanted sprinkles.
So we tried to accommodate. Okay, there we go, there we go. Can you provide an escort for us? All right, all right, all right. Good.
In that case.
I appreciate that.
Frosting in the middle, though, even turned the lights on.
There we go, woo!
Oh, funny.
So wonderful. Well, that was super, super fast. There's a lot of information, but I don't want to keep you too long. So anybody have any questions?
Thanks for your optimism.
Oh, no problem.
Your middle name is Optimistic. Oh, yeah, so you've done a great job with Discover Austin and all, promoting us like you have, and continue to do so. And let's just make 2020 a throwaway year, and we'll see what we can do with 2021 here.
I love it. Let's plan for that.
Right.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Great job, Nancy. Thank you.
Also, under recognition awards is a Poppy Days proclamation, which runs May 28th, May 31st. So the proclamation is, whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922, and whereas VFW Papi, Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled, needy veterans, and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans, and whereas the basic purpose of annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars is eloquently reflected in desire of honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore, I, Stephen M. King, Mayor of City of Austin, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim May 28th to May 31st, 2021, as Buddy Papi Days. And I urge all patriotic citizens to wear Buddy Papi as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, the consent agenda. Looking for a motion, please.
So we'll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under petitions and requests, we find item number five, a resolution affirming the city's participation in the Office of the State Auditor's Performance Measurements Program.
Annually, the City of Austin has participated in the state's program that allows for some extra local government aid to roughly about $4,000 if an entity goes through a participation in more of a survey of the community members who want to log on to the survey and respond to roughly 10 to 12 questions. So this year, again, we've got the process started, but in order to get into the program, we need council to pass a resolution, authorizing participation and such. And then we'll have that uploaded or linked to our websites, the citizens can go on. And in essence, grade some of the city operations as far as what are the condition of the streets? Do you like the snow plowing, those sort of things? Is it a great representation of the community? Usually I only get about a couple hundred people respond to it, but again, going through the motions in order to get some additional revenue for the City of Austin.
All right, thank you, Tom. Looking for a resolution for number five? So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Boshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Item number six, looking for a motion approving the 2020 audit report. Tom.
As was noted at our last work session on May 3, the auditor's Craig Popehanagen from Clifton, Larson, Allen presented the audit report with no findings. We'd request council approval of such.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven's resolution, accepting donations to the City of Austin.
So moved.
Hold on here, is there? Let me see, is there, there's things to read here. Audit thing's taking way too much time. Page 58. Oh, my goodness. 54.
One.
Looks like we have one $25 gift from Mavis and Laverne Gabriel for the Austin Fire Department in memory of retired firefighter Carl Hansen. I knew Carl Hansen. Thank you, Mavis and Laverne Gabriel. And I'll look for a resolution to accept that donation.
So moved. Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Boshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Number eight's a resolution authorizing the closure and liquidation of the Blazing Star Trail account. Tom's got something against trails.
Yep. I got something against paying $21 a month to have an account there.
Me too. Good call.
In working with the City of Albert Lee, the city has a joint account that several, many, many years ago in 2001, each of us put $5,000 in for the city to administer expenses related to the Blazing Star Trail with the hopes that eventually bonding money would come. Well, we've had this account for 20 years, and trying to work with Wells Fargo Bank on this and a couple other accounts, they've started to change the processes a little bit. Right now, they want to start charging us $21 a month, in essence, for that account. I worked with Albert Lee to say, hey, let's just eliminate the account, give each other each half of the balance. The Joint Powers Board for Blazing Star will still exist, we just don't want to have any money at this point in time until we get some bonding money. So again, this is just authorization to close the account out and give Albert Lee their half, we'll keep our half, and avoid paying $21 a month on an account that earns a dollar in interest.
Excellent. Any questions or comments for Tom, counsel?
Good job.
Yeah, every, every dollar counts, no doubt. Just looking for a resolution on that number eight. So move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Boshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you.
On another note, we have a savings account for the city that's the same process, only it's $75 a month. We're in the process of closing that account out.
Excellent. I note with your picture of the expense side of that checking account, it looks just like mine, my own personal checking account, six.
Lots of checks.
It's ridiculous. Thanks, Tom. Item number nine, approving the budget adjustment number four, transfer of funds for the Riverside Arena Roofing Project. Tom?
Council recently approved alternate number two for the Riverside Arena Roofing Project, which was going to need an additional $250,000. Originally, in the memo, it was to come out of the building fund. That was with the intent that we had transferred excess general fund dollars to the building fund. Well, we've come to the conclusion, we haven't done that yet, so let's just allocate that money out of the excess general fund, fund balance, so that they can do the metal roofing on Riverside Arena.
Questions, comments? Looking for resolution, number nine? So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Boshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 10's motion, looking to appoint Councilmember Paul Fisher to the YMCA board. Motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 11's resolution approving the DNR grant request for the flood acquisition of 304 22nd Street Southwest. Stephen?
Last fall, we received council authorization to apply for a FEMA grant. We were successful in getting that grant, which will cover 75% of the overall cost of acquisition and demolition of the project. So the remaining 25%, then, is typically a local responsibility. And generally, the DNR is very supportive in helping out when local communities have have received a FEMA grant to partner on that local share. So before you tonight is a resolution authorizing us to apply for a DNR grant, which essentially would be 12.5% of the overall project cost, or half of the local share, in the amount of $33,822.88 that likely will get rounded off somehow. But attached in the resolution, or in your backup materials, just showing you the FEMA letter that we received. We're still going through the process of submitting additional documents to FEMA that those dollars have not been released yet to us. But in starting the process and getting prepared for, to move forward when that money does become available, the next step is applying for this DNR grant. The resolution attached authorizes myself, the Hope Works Director, to execute any necessary documents, so we would request, and that our local share would, our 12.5% local share would be covered by our local option sales tax. So with that, we would request approval of the attached resolution.
Questions, comments, counsel? Hearing none, looking for a resolution for number 11? So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Boshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Number 12, we're looking for a motion approving the preliminary plat for Nature's Ridge Third Edition. Holly?
Good evening, council and mayor and council members. The May, the Planning Commission met on May 11 to review preliminary plat of Nature Ridge. It's the third phase of that subdivision, which is located west of the Hormel Nature Center. It's, the proposed subdivision is 26 lots, covering approximately 11 and 1/2 acres. Their last subdivision was done in 2019. That was about 13 lots, and all of those lots have been sold. The Planning Commission, with seven members present, voted unanimously to approve the preliminary plat with the following conditions, that its approval by, that it gets approval by city staff of changes regarding right-of-way street location, utility easements, and lot with prior submission of the final plat, and that a development agreement and civil engineering drawings detailing utilities, and minimum subdivision standards required for the pending project be submitted, along with the final plat, that the final plat shall be submitted and approved within six months of approval of the preliminary plat, and that all applicable provisions of the subdivision code and permitting agencies shall be met. So there are, there are some adjustments that will be made to the final plat before it is presented to Planning Commission and council, but it should be substantially similar to the plat that was submitted on a preliminary basis. The petitioner does hope to have the final plat and development agreement done by the June meeting. That's kind of a short timeline, but we'll see if we can get it done. Do you have any questions?
No. Nope. Hearing none, Holly, thank you. Looking for a motion for number 12.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13, declaring the property at 1104 11th Avenue Southwest as a hazardous structure. Looking for resolution.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Boshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
13 includes three motions granting the Planning and Zoning Department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. 14A is 1009 First Avenue Northwest, the Toon Property. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 14B is the address is 104 14th Street Southeast, the Gonzalez Property. Need a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 14C is 1914 3rd Avenue Northeast, the Howe Property. Looking for a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizens addressing the council, is anybody on Zoom? Nobody's in person. I don't see any numbers on the Zoom, so we'll move on to honorary council. Christopher Moore was obviously unable to make it today. I haven't heard from him, but certainly I will check in with him and make sure everything's okay, and remind him of the next meeting, so we have no council member, honorary council member comments. Reports and recommendations. Oh, we're moving on to this 15, okay. Tom, 2022 budget discussion. Give us the lay of the land. This might be something we want to certainly talk at a work session in more in depth, but give us a little bit of.
Usually, we have after the auto reports approved, we take a week or a meeting off, and then we start the budget discussions, which I plan heavy, hard and heavy that I plan on for the June meetings. But I thought I'd start out maybe this year with a little different format in that to start our process or to find some, some, get some estimated costs going. We thought maybe we'd like to hear from the elected officials just brief overviews of what your expectations are for twenty twenty-two. You know, we have significant fund balance after the CARES Act funds, and our audit was closed out last year. We have potentially significant increases because of comp and class implementation for the twenty twenty-two year. We have staff, we have eliminated, what, four and a half positions in the twenty twenty-one budget. We have some vacancies now that have not been filled. So I thought I maybe do is just listen to council for what some of your expectations or thoughts or desires and goals for next year were, or even beyond. Because we all know the police department's remodel of a couple of years ago was like to be a ten to twelve-year remodel. Otherwise, they're going to probably need some more facilities. Fire station turns, what, fifty years old in twenty thirty? It'll be here before we know it. Do we want to start setting dollars aside? So I thought I'd just see if council has any thoughts. And we've got some new council members here for his budget process. We'll hit numbers, percentages, dollars, heavy in June. But I just thought, you know, is there any thoughts from the elected officials as what some of their goals were they would want us to see when we start planning for the twenty twenty-two budget?
And the governor, they agreed on a budget, I guess hasn't been signed, but what, they talk about LGA in that at all?
I haven't heard.
At this point in time, I think they've talked budget targets, which they have to bring through a special session in June. We'll know August first by law, they have to certify our LGA number. Good news is, is with the state being in pretty good, sound financial management with no deficits, I'm hopeful that our LGA at least stays the same, maybe a slight inflationary increase.
And just one more thing, Tom, before I let go after this. But could you give us a little perspective on how you thought we'd look last February as opposed to how we look today with the federal money that's come in and the CARES Act and other of these other programs?
The CARES Act money, when they allowed us to use that for budgeted police and fire salaries, even though we'd already had tax levy LGA paying for it, that one point nine million was immediately put basically to the bottom line. So when we ended twenty twenty, the audit, we've probably got three point two to four point two million dollars above our normal fund balance levels of forty-two to forty-eight percent. One-time dollars or one-time fund balance. So if if the thought is, hey, let's spend four million and buy a new fire station or a portion of a fire station, the money's gone. So my goal has always been with council to have a balanced budget going forward. Some council, you might say, hey, we got X million dollars. Let's use that to buy the tax levy down for a number of years. That's certainly an option. Just want to make sure council knows that eventually your but your use of fund balance will go away. And then at what point in time does that create a larger tax increase than would normally be used because you're using the fund balance? But right now, you're in a phenomenal position because of dollars in the bank. If there's historically, if we've had fund balances never to this level, but larger fund balances, we've used it to pay off debt. We're debt-free. We've used it for capital projects, you know, libraries, arenas, whatever it might be, have been the used out of those dollars because they're one-time projects that a lot of times are not recurring costs going forward. So council's in a unique position in that you have dollars set aside. Now granted, you've got, you know, some increases coming next year. I think our projections for twenty twenty-two were like one point one million dollars for salary and benefits for comp and class. But again, we reduced four and a half employees from that original, original projection. So we're probably in the eight to nine hundred thousand dollar range right now of needed new dollars, whether it's LGA taxes, ICE arena rents, whatever, in order to balance that budget out for twenty-two with everything staying the same as we normally do business, no new additions and no deletions.
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, probably eight to nine hundred thousand dollars is the estimate for assuming the four and a half employees we reduced in the twenty twenty-one budget don't come back. And again, we have some vacancies now in twenty twenty-two that have not been rehired that if the decision's not to refill those positions, that drives that number down even lower.
And Tom, eight hundred thousand, that's what, like a ten-ish, eleven-ish percent increase?
Right now, your levy is seven million four thirty-six, so ten percent is seven hundred and forty-three thousand. Each levy percentage is just roughly seventy-five thousand dollars. Not included in the twenty twenty-one budget because at the time the budget was put together, the state was hitting the skids. We have an additional hundred and sixty-one thousand of LGA that I'm going to assume will be there in twenty twenty-two. So that also helps, you know, potentially buy down that levy.
If we were to look at filling some of the vacancies that we have, how does that project out? I know it's like eighty thousand per employee.
Eighty thousand a person, yep.
So.
One percent tax levy or one percent, you know, use of the fund balance, however you want to handle it. Again, once it's there, you know, that cost continues there forever and ever. So we don't want to, you know, unless you're going to put the full four million dollars aside in deficit spend for the next ten years, you know, we don't recommend you keep doing that because once that ten years is up, then it's time to pay the piper.
I was thinking the same thing as Joyce. You know, we eliminated whatever, three guys in the tree crew. We got office people doing different jobs to fill gaps. I'd kind of like to see us hire again to fill those gaps that we had before. Get our new tree, you know, tree crew hired again, whatever the departments that we cut and didn't hire, fill those back up again to a more of a complete staff.
Yeah, I know, just from talking to a lot of the departments, they are feeling the vacancies. They're feeling the weight of of the loss of a person.
So now we're talking both twenty twenty-one losses that were in the budget that we eliminated, those four and a half, and also the twenty twenty-two vacancies that, you know, like I think we've got a librarian that we haven't rehired. Are we looking at kind of both a combination of those to bring back? We want all those people looking at considering.
I think so.
Bringing them back.
McKeegan lost a body, but that that was budgeted throughout, just happened to retirement. So I think those kind of things are something I'd certainly endorse.
So all the positions this year, library, police department, what other vacancies do we have?
Engineering tech.
Engineering tech, halftime engineering, administrative assistant just resigned. So all those are in the twenty twenty-one budget.
Replacing those are in the twenty twenty-one?
They're in the twenty twenty-one budget, whether they've been replaced or not, not yet, like for the police department.
The only one that's been the engineering tech that's been posted.
Yeah, I guess what I'd love to see us do is, I mean, I still think we got to keep an eye on keeping that tax levy low because you've got businesses that are struggling to recover. You know, the whole idea of fixed income elderly folks doesn't go away. But I do think we look back at the plan that we put on forward last year, and let's figure out kind of what worked and what didn't work. And if there's things that didn't work, you know, clearly this area is missing a body, and this is what's not getting done, and we can see clear evidence on that. I think we have that conversation. Conversely, I think things that we did that did work, I would love to see us do more. I see the tree trimming as a massive success for the taxpayers. I mean, we were able to get essentially the same job done for a hundred thousand dollars less. And I get that there was some political heat that was with that, but I would love to see us expand it to, you know, do we look at lawn mowing? Do we look at some other things that private industry can do cheaper than, you know, what the city can do? And then I think, you know, for the the long-term kind of federal dollars, I don't mind spending those, but I would love to spend them on stuff that's going to have long-term structural benefit to the city, you know, whether it's a fire station or, you know, something longer term. I'm open to listening to ideas on that.
Like, fire fleet is still mostly underfunded based on for a two million dollar fire truck in the next five years, so some money could be put aside on that.
Yeah.
Obala, anybody else thoughts?
I believe, being new to this, I believe in previous budgets, there's also, I know our biggest expense is always personnel. But I believe there's also some money that's get aside for various things, like, say, housing or what have you. And I don't know if it would make sense to have some of the extra money that we have sort of fill those buckets. So if we're normally put, say, fifty thousand dollars into, you know, economic development, if we took some of the federal money, and that way the fifty thousand wouldn't be in the levy budget, so to speak, that I don't necessarily, I am concerned. I don't want to have any, you know, thirty percent levy jump two or three years down the road. But if there are ways that we could use some of this money to help feather the increases, especially as we do still have some businesses and folks kind of churning right now, I'd like to see what ideas that would involve.
Do you look at more like it, set aside dollars, let's use some of those four million dollars, let's set aside X maybe for business development. A lot of times, we transfer that into the building fund. Like now, there's one point one million, I think, for housing initiatives there. No new money going in because quite frankly, that was taken out of the last budget scenario. Interest earnings are horrible. But there's situations where we could take dollars like that, you know, set it aside. That way, it's not in the levy. It's just, hey, fund balance, we're going to set aside a hundred grand for business development, whatever it might be. Eventually, we need a description of what that is going to be used for. But I mean, there's certainly that options that just takes one-time money out, reserves it for a one-time expense, and not built into the levy every year. That's those options.
Yeah, the other thing I would really like to consider is if there are any pieces, you know, when I got a chance to tour with all the department heads in January, I asked every single one of them, you know, if I asked you one thing, you know, that would make your life easier, whatever, what would that be? And every single department head, it was, it was a position, which I get, which shows that the city has been running pretty lean and pretty tight. I don't know what things there might be to sort of purchase that might help some of our departments with productivity. But if there was a capital expense that would save a person five, ten hours a week or something like that, or even something as mundane as, I think I remember Stephen telling me we were on a ten-year LED light bulb replacement cycle because it costs so much for the light bulbs, but we're actually saving in the long run. Well, if we could take this bucket of money and speed that up so we can save more money long term, that'd be something I'd be interested in pursuing, ideas like that.
Mayor, members, in the last go-around, we had a budget working group. Wondered if members still thought that was effective and whether you'd like to look at that again moving forward, or what feedback you might have on that?
Counsel? Any reason to have a working group?
No.
No, I don't think so. I'll be involved then, all right, that's fine.
I guess if nobody else has anything to say, I'd like to make a few comments on the budget. I guess first of all, I'd like to see the the open positions that were budgeted for twenty twenty-one filled. I don't know why they weren't filled. I see that the engineering tech position was posted. And I understand that's that's been always been a difficult one for us to fill, so I can kind of understand why we posted that one. But I don't understand why the opening in the the police department wasn't posted immediately because that's even more difficult for us to fill. And we, it took us a long time to get to this point where we are at full staff. I'd like to see us stay at full staff at our police department. I think that's very important. As we've seen by the chief's weekly or the regular reports, I mean, despite everything, the world slowing down, they're they're staying busy and they're staying active, and we need them despite what some people in the world think. I think we need the police department, at least in Austin, Minnesota. Our police department is, I think, exemplary in their dealings with the public. And some of the other positions that we have, I'd like to see those filled and then start looking at the positions that we eliminated last year and some of the things we did, like like Jason mentioned. Are they actually working or are they not? Sure, the tree contracting out the tree trimming, we did get a lot of our tree trimming done, but we're going to be out of money soon if we aren't. And we didn't get any new trees planted this year. There was no money in the budget for new trees, which was part of the old budget. There was always money for trees, and we need to be planting trees, especially. I noticed recently there was an outcry on social media about the project in the northwest on Eighth Street where they're eliminating just about every tree from Eighth Avenue to Tenth Avenue. And there's a lot of people disappointed with that. And so we need to replace those trees, if not in that same area, at least somewhere in town. So we need to have something in place for that. And we need to be looking at those things, that if they are working, let's maybe continue them or expand them. But I think we're going to find that having our own staff is going to be more efficient and better in the long run. And also look at setting aside for some of those things I think we need. I think we've identified that daycare is a definite need in the community and focusing on business development. I think we've we've got some money set aside for housing, and we've got an excellent resource in the HRA to pursue housing projects. I think our focus should be on economic development, getting jobs in town, and working on doing something with daycare. I've read recently that they are looking at some changes at the state level, but it's definitely a big need. You know, sure, if we build the houses and they come and live here, but they can't work because they don't have any place to, for their kids to go during the day, will kind of defeat the purpose. So I think our focus should be on economic development and daycare. Let Mr. Medgarden focus on housing projects and go from there.
Any other comments?
I'd like to say something.
Sure.
Go. You want to go first?
You go.
I want to, I agree with Jeff, and I also agree with Paul. Some of the positions we cut in twenty twenty-one are pretty important positions, especially with like the parking and recs department, and they kind of got hit hard. I'd like to see us get back to full staff. I know eighty thousand dollars for what, the four positions we cut going forward would be a lot of money, but I'd like to see those go back. I mean, I'd also like to see a little bit of the money go towards the, we've talked about the fire truck for many years now, and that, for me, that's a huge expense that we're not really planning for yet. And like Jeff said, I don't, I'd like to see the police officer hired with the changing of times. That makes me a little nervous with us waiting so long. Are we going to get quality candidates? Are people going to go to school for police officers in the future? So that's just kind of where I feel we just spend a little bit of money here, but maybe still save a little bit. We don't know what the next few years are going to bring. And the levy, you know, who knows what we're going to put it at, but I'm okay with increasing in it a little bit to more than four percent.
Yeah, I agree with everyone comment, like bringing other position back and either filling the police department and also working on fire department and or rec and recreation, that's been a big topic in the last month. But one thing that I see is not being talked about a lot is the daycare. And we see that in every community, I go every, where I go, everyone talked about that. And I feel like if we will think about big thing about the community, we have to start thinking, putting money aside. If we have the dollar, why don't we start something from our own instead of looking at the state level so that we can build a daycare that can benefit our community and also our, those people working very hard that they find it difficult to find a daycare because we have so many employee coming to town. And the big topic, there's no daycare. You can go to school district, that, everything they talked about, daycare. My husband have to stay home or my wife have to stay home because we don't have a daycare. So I think overall, everything is great, but I feel like the council, the mayor, we should really, really start to think that we haven't done anything about it before so so that we can serve the whole community.
And if I can build on one thing, I think this is a great conversation, is I think we got to be really intentional about moving forward and looking at where do, what do we want to get done? And what are the resources that are necessary for that? I don't think we can just look back at what did we do in twenty nineteen? Now, did we make all the perfect changes last year? Maybe, maybe not. But I guess before I add a position back, I'm fine with the police. But before we add a position back, I want to see a pretty clear analysis of what's not getting done right now. Because I think change is hard for people, and we've already gone through the hardest part, which is making the change. And so I think adding a position back because there are specific things and services that we have not been able to give to taxpayers is very different than the department complained about it a lot and the perception as we used to have somebody. So I think we've got to still have a bar before we go back because those are real structural costs that we're adding back in. And I think the community was pretty clear that the tax levy continuing to go up double digits was not on the cards for them last year. I don't know that that's materially changed.
Yeah, I guess one thing I didn't touch on and just throw out that I think we could keep the tax levy down at a reasonable amount, not as low as we did last year, but using some of that federal money to to buy it down a little bit, but keep it reasonable. I think we realized last year that we probably could have gone six percent and not had as much pain. I think that's maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of where we should shoot for this year.
I agree.
Yeah.
So mayor, I think my goal would be then at the June meeting, June seventh meeting, will be a pretty good hefty discussion, but you know, it's, thanks for all your comments. It's good to know so that we can start planning and maybe bring some projections to you for the June seventh meeting. Our goal would then be to maybe hopefully tie some of these into what broadly what costs are, et cetera, so we can get documents sent out to the department heads because we need to get that process going to get back to hear what their thoughts are for the next year.
Every every time we've talked about the budget on, when I was serving as council member too, I keep the same view right now. I want a functioning city, you know, and that's our goal is to be functional, you know. If that means there's a levy two or one or three percent higher than maybe somebody's come with, but we need to function. And to that level of function, I'd just like to congratulate the city staff and all the department heads in what they've done in in the last sixteen months or however long, in fourteen months. Because this is unprecedented times, we had no roadmap for this. And the folks, the labor force, the administration, I can, my picture is far more clear than it was in January, just sitting in the mayor's seat. The amount of moving parts and work being done behind the scenes that we're not always exposed to because it takes time and there's effort, but there's there is extreme amount of effort going on from every department head and our administrator. And I just want to say thank you because this is, it was unprecedented times to Dave's magical COVID nineteen every six minutes. These kind of.
Thank you.
I know it was great.
They were great, very appreciated. Thank you.
That's obviously not a responsibility of our chief police, but he took it on. And and these are, these are, I could say that about every department head and every, every employee. They've done more than has been asked for. So this next budget, yeah, we have some some cushion, I guess, with the federal dollars we have, but I want to be functioning. And I certainly wanted to say thank you to the employees that have worked hard to keep us afloat at this point, so thank you for your work.
Yes, I second that.
With that, we have, are we moving on then to, is there any committee report or city administrative report or?
Just want to.
Full work session, right?
Right, correct. Does seem like the state did a fifty-two billion dollar two-year budget deal. Those specifics are still to be worked out. No black or white smoke on our seven point four five million on the bonding technical correction, so we'll continue to try to figure out where that might have landed. They do anticipate reconvening no later than June fourteenth at the legislature. We didn't get notice that our EPA Brownfield grant was not was not selected in another competitive process, and Julie Kleinfeldter has an item.
Julie.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council people. Can I share my screen real quick? I think it'll be easier to give you a visual.
Does Ann share?
Thank you. So I just wanted to let you know, I know I've talked a little bit every time about the Social Justice Book Club. We are meeting this Thursday, where we're talking about this chair rocks the manifest festo against ageism. But I definitely wanted to highlight that next month, on June seventeenth, we're going to be talking about a book called Evicted: Poverty and Profit in the American City. And I think it's going to be a really good one. We have it on audiobook, so even if you aren't a reader, you can listen to it in your car. Definitely let us know if you're if you're looking for that. We can help you with that here at the library, and that'll be on June seventeenth. This weekend, the Austin Page Turners. Everybody's really excited to be able to get back to something. And every time I check the weather, it looks like the weather keeps getting better and better for Saturday. So come on out on Saturday, the twenty-second at one o'clock, bring your own chair. This is for the writers workshop at ten thirty, which you do need to sign up for if you're interested in, but the main event will be at one. We're going to have a big tent up, it's going to be a lot of fun. And then last but not least, there was, this was slightly delayed. If any of you were out at the Mill Pond today looking for the book walk, we had a slight snafu, but we're getting that figured out. The Friends of the Public Library have the local author Helen Holder's book, Sleepover with Grandma, is going to be out around the Mill Pond. It's a book walk, so you have one page as you go and you walk around the whole pond. And hopefully, the weather's going to hold. hold out for them, and that'll be out the 17th to the 24th. And then lastly, the library board met this last week and did decide to open up our hours for the summer, so we're really excited. We're going to almost double our open hours to 38 hours a week, watch for information on that. And yeah, just trying to get back to something that looks a little bit more normal for everybody for the summer, so check out the website and, thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Any other, any other comments from department heads?
Stephen Lang has an item.
Stephen?
Thank you. I just wanted to add a quick thank you to all the volunteers for the electronics recycling event. We had great weather last Saturday for the event. We had our normal amount of people at the gate come 8:30, 9 o'clock to get things started, but it sounded like once, once the group got through that first initial pack, things slowed down a little later in the day. But I would like to thank Mayor and some of the council members that were able to make it for that, and all the other volunteers as well to help make that successful. So thank you to everyone, and we'll look forward to having another event next year.
And that was tremendous, while you could work in a sweatshirt and not get hot. We had great representation, we had the STS there, sentence service people, we had utilities, city, county, and the citizens all volunteered, so it was a nice mix of folks coming. And I don't know if Chief McCoy filed a first report of injury for a neck injury that I might have given him when I lifted a TV and it came apart in our hands, but if there is, it's a valid injury, that's work-related, no doubt. One thing I do want to say is, as you, as these cars come through, and they come through in mass amounts, and some have these TVs from 1970s and they're huge, and some have just a bag, but the great interaction that the volunteers have, and Obala, and Posma, and the chief, the community loves it. And just that, hey, how's it going, thanks for coming, they give them a little ribbing, take their stuff, and that's impactful. So to watch that as the mayor, watch that unfold, I think we have a great community of volunteers that are there for all the right reasons, you know, and just that, that interaction with the public is, was really heartening. And I think the workhorse of the day was Garrett Clark, who, we abused him, and I left before, and he was still there, but we abused him, and I'm sure he's still hopefully healthy. Anyway, great event, thanks for reminding me of that, Stephen. Joyce?
I just want to say congratulations to our senior class of 2021. I don't know if we'll meet before they, I don't think we will be, so congratulations to all the seniors in town.
Crazy graduation. Michael?
Nothing.
Go back now.
Nothing.
Jeff?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Obala?
Nothing, Your Honor.
I just had one question.
Sure.
With like the governor's executive orders and everything kind of starting to pull back, is there anything we need to be doing locally for like outdoor dining? I know we had changed some things last year, or is that all good to go?
Ann, can you? Ann, are you on? Did you hear the question?
Yep, yep, I'm on.
Okay.
Yep. So with the expiration of the executive orders, the resolution that we passed last year stated that their temporary outdoor seating permit would expire once they were permitted to go back to 100% capacity. So that is going to expire on May 27th, so the outdoor dining as temporarily permitted will be over on May 27th.
Do we have anybody that's taking advantage of it that doesn't have permanent facilities now in place? I think everybody, everybody, I mean, the Old Mill added, I mean, not that they're in the city, but the B&amp;J increased their patio, I don't think any others really have taken advantage of it, heavily, would we need to change?
Yeah, I've had at least one or two reach out to me, including Gravity Storm over on Main Street there, is interested in about, trying to see if we might be able to do something a little more of a permanent basis.
Maybe we should take a look at it then, I guess, if it's available.
I like the deal.
Yeah, and with Gravity Storm, the way, so the council reviewed the sidewalk cafe ordinance a few years ago, and we removed the percentage of the food requirement, and then put just kind of a definition for the, from the Minnesota Department of Health as to how much food they have to have in there. Unfortunately, Gravity Storm doesn't have any sort of food license right now, so they wouldn't qualify for our sidewalk cafe. And then along with that, their particular frontage, we've been discussing this on staff level also, as a side note, their frontage kind of includes a power pole there, so they don't really have a lot of space. You know, with the governor's orders, we kind of threw out a lot of our regulations just to make people work and have the businesses survive, but, you know, all those ADA requirements and stuff like that, we need to comply with that for long-term. But we are looking at that, and we're meeting with council member Posma on Friday about that, too.
Thank you. Anything else, Jason? Nope. Paul?
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right. Well, with that, we're looking for a motion to adjourn to Monday, June 7th.
So moved.
Second.
On the paper?
I oppose.
Motion carries, we're good. Thank you. No work session.